To our regular monthly meeting. Meeting is now called to order. I'm gonna ask that you please silence our cellphones. And if you must talk, please move out into the hallway. I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand for the invocation.
Pastor Louis.
We're gonna have invocation by Councilman Condo. And the pledge led all by Councilman Dewey.
Father God, we just bless your name on tonight. We give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise for allowing us to be here. And God, as always, we thank you for being in the midst of the meeting on tonight. And God, we pray that everything will go in order. God bless this city, bless this community, bless every family that's represented here on tonight. And God, we just mindful to give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor. Because your word states, and we know that all things work together for the good of them that love you and are called according to your purpose. So Father God, for this city on tonight, for this meeting, we just count it all joy. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the religion for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle with the liberty of justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember DeMaile Bowden.
Present.
Mayor Protown Lee Condo.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Dewey.
Present.
Councilmember Mamie Perry.
Present.
Councilmember Miranda Wimbach.
Present.
Thank you. Item number five, approval of the January 7th minutes with any necessary corrections.
I make the motion approve the minutes with any necessary corrections.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Dewey. Second by Councilwoman Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment. If we have anyone out in the public that would like to make a comment on what is gonna be discussed on tonight, please go to the podium and state your name and what you would like to say.
Good evening, council. Good evening to citizens of Patterson and various business people. I'm here on behalf of the Community Center of Patterson, Louisiana. I'm proud to say that I was an employee at Patterson Community Center many years ago upon the beginning of the Community Center. And as a native of Patterson, I've always been doing the duties of service to the city of Patterson. I was so happy when the town of Patterson became the city of Patterson. So as a city now, we always, the Community Center was always an asset, I feel, to the city of Patterson. Ever since I was 12, I can remember giving muscular dystrophy function in the city of Patterson for, and then going to busking bill. I can remember that time. My experience with that made me even more concerned about the needs in the city and what we need to do to be a city. I don't know what's happening at this late time in the evening, but I can remember that assets that the Community Center gave to the city of Patterson, I remember becoming employed first as a tax preparer with Grimble. I can't remember the year, do you remember Angela? But it was about 2010, I think, maybe, along in that area. And around 2011, this Community Center, which was Patterson Community Center, which is a place that associated itself with the social needs and beings of the citizens of Patterson and any social needs that needed in the city, really did do that as a nonprofit organization. But it also gave back to the city of Patterson. We very seldom, we had to acquire our own needs most of the times. And we didn't wait for it. The city of Patterson, the Patterson Community Center began its first feeding for the elderly here in the city of Patterson, beginning at the Patterson Community Center. First camp with kids began at the city of Patterson. The first, we was introduced to the animal parades began at the city of Patterson with the first block parties, first fair featuring Tucker, where we give back the funds to the city of Patterson. What I'm saying is, the kids had their first jobs at the Community Center of the city of Patterson. We gave back to the community when they had burnouts. Kids need food, we had a food pantry. We gave back to the city of Patterson and the needs of the people. I thinking about the elderly that I took on, we took on, well, I'm a Thad being in the theater performing arts. So they were so happy to get on the bus and go to Thad's Theater, where T. Val was so excited to call all the elderly citizens and get them prepared to go on a bus ride. We kept up with the seniors' citizens. Our tutoring came back. We tutored kids in school and when they were out of school in the city of Patterson, we took them to the zoo, the cart ranch, even escorted by the city of Patterson police all the way to Lafayette in a convoy that was the first time ever being done. We also had the first block party in the city of Patterson. We contributed those funds back to the city of Patterson. Children on Christmas time, we give all this respect to Seal, Carrie, Carl, Butler. And I'm proud to be there. And the head junior came later on after I was gone. I finished my medical career in nursing and moved on. But the Community Center was always a part of me. And I cannot see whatever the devil's been going on in the city of Patterson, that having to be a bigger asset than the services that was provided by the Community Center to the city of Patterson. We really did what we had to do. A lot of times, things came out of those ladies' pockets. And getting even as far as meeting, Ms. Beverly, it was her first time meeting me. And we got together and we formed a team and started doing feedings on holidays so people can come out to eat, even beyond that. After everything was gone, we fed people on the outside. As far as the Community Center, we also, I can say we was the ones that lent you some of your municipality workers. I say we can acquire that by Holden being a part of this city, community here. That was his first job. Those kids worked in snowball stands all around town. That was done by the city of Patterson, that funds came back to the city of Patterson. Holden, at least, all of them were little camp workers, and they acquired some of their skills from the Community Center by being on those programs. And they're still functioning today in big ways from the Community Center. I cannot see the situation or the problem that is going on in the city of Patterson, if there's a problem. And if you know what the problem is, you need to fix it, or it can't be just the Community Center. So there are bigger things. I have not seen, I know the Recreation Department is a governing entity, and we have many ominousities that we can use. And I didn't see anything happening with the Community Center until it transitioned to the Patterson junior high school. Long it looked like to me, long it was functioning right here, everything was good. But when the two entities entwined, that gave them some more attachments that should be look like separate for me, to me, from a Recreation Department and a Community Center, because that's two different things. So I think you should consider, and I know it's no blame for nobody else, but we was a community that thrived together. And I don't see why we should dismount or something that's, if it ain't broken, but I don't think you should fix it. Just make a solution to it. And if you know what the problem is, I think you should fix it.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on a specific topic to be addressed?
On the discussion on the employee pay, will we have a chance to speak on that?
Well, I've recognized Virgil because he...
So I had two, well, two of them. One was the employee pay. What was another percentage like?
We don't even know was that involved, that's Councilman Bowden.
So I have to wait on that.
I don't even think it has anything. We, the decision on the pay cuts were final. What I think Councilman Bowden is talking about was what took place during the storm, am I correct? Okay, well, I think you need to, so what is it that you would like to speak on?
Are we gonna go, are we gonna address it all the way if I'm gonna speak on it?
Well, right now, we in public comment, so...
I mean, if you wanna discuss, I'll come back.
Okay, come back.
I'll be open for discussion.
Come back. Angela?
Mine was about employee pay, so we're allowed to speak when he brings it up? Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, so anybody else? All right, so next we will have Ms. Vicky Melvin.
Can we go over there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here because I had to pay a $550 deposit, water and gas on my mother's house. She passed away in 2020, and I've been paying the bills since. I foolishly and didn't realize that the heater was gas, and we turned the gas off in the summer because we weren't, we didn't have any gas in the house, and I didn't realize that the heater was gas. So when I called to have it turned back on, I was told before I could have it turned back on, I had to pay $550, one for water and the other for gas. I wanna know why. I've lived in this town 67 years, I've paid her bills, I've paid her bills since 2020 when she passed, and I don't understand why I had to pay this much money to get the water and gas turned back on.
Utility...
Her house is in a real estate right now.
The utility clerk is here. I need the utility clerk because I need you to come over here. Who was the person? Because we need to speed up. And I could answer, but I need you all, because there was a $5 deposit on it. When people pass, when people pass, it goes, at that point, the $5 deposit was from your parents. Since the change, because we've been left with so many bills and so forth, it was passed in a meeting and so forth, that when someone come and for new water and for new gas and so forth, they would have to pay the deposit.
That's...
I was standing there, and you were asked that you wanna put it in your name, and you said no, it was in, I was standing there.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't want it in my name.
Okay, but your nephew, who's a very young person, so if he doesn't pay that bill, then, if he doesn't pay that bill, that's a dead bill.
Well, you didn't hear the whole conversation.
I did, I did.
No, they told me before I could even get the gas or water, I had to pay 550. I could've just paid the money and left it like it is, because a house cannot be changed. The house is in a trust for him till he's 25 years old. So the house is still in my mother's name. It is not in his name.
The utility services, when someone passes away, the services, and you're not the first one, but I need the utility clerks to stand up and come in because...
Let me ask you, can you come up with $550 on the drop of a hat like that when somebody tells you, and you have to pay it because you gotta have gas and water?
Well, the only reason we had it, because we went through the cold spell, other than that, you would've came back and had it turned on.
Say again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The reason you came to get the gas turned on, because we were going through the cold spell, other than that, you would not have came.
But I would've had to pay water. Oh, that's true, you wouldn't have known about it because I wouldn't have come.
Okay, the utility, could I hear from the utility clerk exactly what was discussed?
Okay, Julia, you wanna, because you the person that waited on her at the time?
And the language that was used, really, you should have been arrested with the language that you were...
I did not cuss, sir, I do not cuss.
Okay, so I came in on the second half of the conversation. I'm not sure who Ms. Vicky has spoke to, but that part is irrelevant, because it had passed that all the deposit was going to increase. That was voted on by the council. Now, what was happening is, like the mayor said, we had a lot of utility bills that was left in deceased names. And what was happening is, the family was moving into those houses, running up a huge water bill, and then they would leave. And the city was being stuck with utility bills, water bills, that we couldn't collect on, because the person that was deceased, the bill could no longer be collected from them. So what they decided to do was, anybody who's living in a house, whether it's their house or whomever, when they have utilities, has to be put in their name. It can't be left in a deceased person's name. So whoever is renting, who's ever living there, the utilities has to be put in their name. So they have to do a deposit for both water and gas. And that's what Ms. Vicky was faced with when she turned the gas off. And to come back and put it back on, she couldn't put it back on in her father's name because he was deceased. So that's why she was told it had to be put in the name of the person who was gonna be living in the house. It's all the way across the board. It's no pick and choose. Once we know that somebody is deceased that's living at a residence, when someone comes to have services turned on, it has to be put in their name.
Whether it's family or not, right now.
So the good suffer for the bad is what it is, because those people that didn't pay their bills is not me. I pay my bills.
Well, it's all the way across the board. It's not good, bad suffering.
Yeah. But why so much money? Well, my paycheck needs to go up then, because, you know, so there's nothing I can do, it's just...
You're welcome.
Ms. Chantel Short-Congan, Chantel Gann. Thank you. Mr. McKenzie-Marsell?
Hi, my name's Gabby.
My name's Emily. And we are on the varsity cheer team at Patterson High School, and we would like to do a can shake on February 22nd at 9 o'clock to 11:00 on Catherine Street by the Dollar General, and we would like to earn money for our upcoming cheer season.
February 22nd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Tenter?
9 to 11.
9 to 11. Ooh, you're not gonna be out there that long, huh?
Probably not.
All right, Chief?
Yes, that's fine.
Chief has said it's fine. Can I get a counsel? Motion made by Councilwoman Perry, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Winbach, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Crew of Amani?
Hi, I'm Caitlin, and I'm a member of the Crew of Amani. I'm here requesting a permit for the Crew of Amani Lundy Graal Parade on March 3rd, starting at 1 o'clock, followed by the block party.
Okay, so we'll do that two-fold. We'll, Chief, 1 o'clock for the parade? Okay, and then, so can I get a motion? I'm gonna do that two-fold. Yeah, do it, sir.
I make the motion.
Question.
Do you all charge the entry fee for your parade?
Yes, we do.
Yes. What is the entry fee amount?
There is, individuals pay 35, and those that have floats is 100.
As a protector of our city's budget, I'm gonna ask Chief Brogan if this is, if money is allocated in your budget for this.
Yes, the overtime, yes, it is.
It's the overtime?
Mm-hmm, it's overtime.
What's the amount of it?
I can't tell you exactly what the overtime is, because each officer is different.
My reason for asking, I know, and for everybody to understand, I love Mardi Gras. I've moved here, so I'm learning to love it. My reason for asking is because, again, as a protector of our city's budget, most municipalities, when there's a festival or something going on, that group who's giving that event pays security. For the Morgan City Shrimp and Petroleum Festival, Morgan City Shrimp and Petroleum Festival has to pay their officers. And the Shrimp and Petroleum Festival pays Morgan City for that. Another municipality that just had a special call meeting last night in reference to a Mardi Gras event, the Mardi Gras Association has to pay for the security. So my question would arise to the Crew of Amani, would you all be able to assist the city in paying some of the expenses for the extra municipalities, I guess like Berwick, Morgan City, Franklin, and Generet that will accommodate?
Those other, excuse me, those other departments don't get paid. They get taken care of by their protectors.
All the municipalities?
They take care of their own people.
But you just said it comes out of overtime?
My people come from overtime. The other departments, we swap out.
Okay.
When they come help me out, I send my guys to go help them out.
So our employees are going to other people's?
Yes.
Okay, so the first fold for the parade is for the permit. Chief?
Yes, that's fine.
Can I get a motion?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Perry, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by our Mayor Protown Lee Condo. I'll do a roll call. Councilwoman Winbach?
Yes.
Councilman Dewey?
Yes.
Councilman Bowden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perry?
Yes.
And Council...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The second fold is the, uh-uh ma'am, get back up. The second fold is the block party. Your request for the block party?
Yes, that's fine, but 5:30 till 5:30.
Okay.
5:30. 5:30, the lights start rolling, it start clearing the streets.
Till 5:30. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Can you get a motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Perry, can I get a second? Second by Councilman Dewey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have requested that Mr. Alyssa Court please come forward. She's one of our auditors. There's something circulating on Facebook that a layman cannot understand what's being surfaced, and we're asking her to clarify, because she is the certified accountant of the information that is being presented, that being presented wrong.
Okay, so I just, I was briefed on this, I guess, by the council and the mayor. Apparently, it was on Facebook that there was lots of overdraft fees that the city was being charged, which is untrue. I think what people are looking at is, on the balance sheet, in the liability section, there is a line item, and it's called cash overdraft. And that, all that means, it's not negative in the bank. All that means is, there are outstanding checks at the city that are more than what's in the bank. And those could be old checks, voided checks that haven't been removed, those kind of things. So they, there are some things that need to be cleaned up, but that's not overdraft fees. An overdraft fee would be on the income statement, and you would see that in the expense section. So, and they're not...
And even when she's speaking of checks, that's some of that unclaimed property, where we send the checks out, people probably never pick the checks up, cash them.
Right.
And we've been told that they need to, they need to be removed from the books, but you can't really remove it.
Right, it's really difficult to get a very clean bank rec, especially when you have a utility fund with tons of customers and things of that nature, you know, they, it just kind of builds up, and then over time, it grows to the point where it's actually more than what is in the bank, even though there's really not a huge risk that those items are gonna be cashed and overdraw the bank. So that's just what that line item represents on the financial statements. Is that sufficient for you? Thanks, Alyssa.
Ms. Beverly?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, I'm required by federal law to present a report annually, because we do get funds from the state, from the feds, and from the municipalities. So I'm here to give our annual report. And for the city of Patterson, we delivered 1,000, 12,500 meals, plus we delivered an additional 500 meals because of weather, and we took out chef food on days when we didn't have hot meals. At our senior center, we delivered 5,000 meals, and we, of course, gave out 200 chef food. Everything has been going great. Our membership at the senior center is up, but the requests for home-delivered meals is going skyrocket. And I hate to tell people that I can't give them the meal, because we don't have the staff or the funds or the places to deliver these meals. So if you have any seniors that have been requesting the meals, just tell them, hang in with me, I have a waiting list, and when I get a shalot, I will fit them in. But right now, because of the economy and some living conditions, it seems like we've lost a lot of young people, and they've left the old people here by themselves, and they can't drive anymore, they can't get out anymore. So we're trying the best, we just need all of y'all's help. to let everybody understand, we're here for the seniors. We have been for 52 years, and we're gonna stay here. And I want to thank y'all from the bottom of my heart for y'all's support. Y'all have always come through when I needed something, if I needed heaters. Oh, I forgot to tell you. We delivered 250 heaters, 150 fans, and I don't know how many blankets, socks, caps, gloves, whatever they asked during the cold weather, we tried to take care of them. And we really thank, because the community came through for me, and a lot of it came from personal donations. And we do thank you, but remember, folks, the seniors are out there by there, and we are a hand to hold, and here to listen, and a heart that cares. And by the way, we got money in the bank, by Mr. Vice Chairman, and my, my workers even got a little Christmas bonus, so we do thank everybody.
This, normally when there's no one else sitting on the audience, Ms. Beverly is here. And I want to thank you so very much. Um, you could have actually sent this report and basically said, read it yourself, um, but she doesn't miss a meeting. She don't even live in Patterson, okay? But she's about, she goes to all the municipalities, to all of their meetings, and she stays abreast of everything in all the different areas. So I commend you, and thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you. And y'all should come to me, because I feel better when I see all the people and I'm not here by myself.
Monica?
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, y'all packed on the desk, have the general fund and the utility fund's income statement. They were emailed to y'all to look over. They were emailed Friday with the packet, and then they're on the counter with y'all. Is there any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Um, I'm getting with them tomorrow to be able to put the budget numbers in, so then we'll be able to see what the remaining is in each row.
I just noticed that there were lines of zeros.
Yeah, it's zeros for the budget numbers, but they're gonna show me tomorrow how to put those numbers in. So I'll be putting those in, and then once I get the budget numbers put in here, I can email y'all another copy with the inputted budget numbers.
Okay. All right, so further discussion and take action on the community center. Councilman Bowden?
Since our last council meeting, we had some discussion about the community center, and I've taken some time to review, um, some information from the community center reference to the fiscal year of July 2023 to July 2024. I'd like to note that I made a request to receive some expenses, but I have not yet received them as of today. So last fiscal year, um, to date from July 2023 to June of 2024, salaries alone for the community center was $34,800. In that same fiscal year time, the community center, as reported to Accounting Clerk Mabel, only brought in $55,245. Therefore, the community center is operate, operated in a negative for the fiscal year of July 2023 to June of 2024. Then, coming into this, which the, the community center lost $29,555, not even included the expenses, which were not provided to me. That was last fiscal year. From July to December, again, this was requested on July 31st via email. I requested to see the expenses from July to December of last year. I have not been provided with that. But I can give you that the employee salaries thus far, from Jan, from June, from July to January, December, is $17,400. So if you take the $17,400 in the red, from the $4,699, the community center is operating in a negative of $12,701. And again, the information has not been provided to me. We were told at the last city council meeting by the board members and employees that they don't have a budget set. So we're here a month later. I'd like to ask the employees of the board members, have you created a budget since our last meeting? Any board member or employee of the board, of the community center, have you all created a board of budget since the last meeting?
No, we haven't yet.
Any, okay? So. If we haven't created a budget, we're operating in the red, and I'm not saying close the commu, community center down in any way, because as Mr. McKinley has said, and everybody in here has been in this community center in one time and fashion. Until the community center can at least break even, it's my recommendation in the form of a motion that the Patterson Community Center be open three days a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from 10:00 to 2:00, or 11:00 to 3:00. The employees can choose the time, working a four-hour shift with only one employee. Employees can alternate days, Monday through Friday, or Friday, and the other, whoever works Monday works Friday. Whoever works Wednesday won't work Monday or Friday. And then the next week, they can switch. The bookings, since the city hall cannot have the bookings for the community center, and there will be times which I'm sure where people will make requests to rent the community center outside of the above agreed hours, the employee and the board come up with a way to successfully receive and process requests in a timely manner. This can be done by creating a request box placed on the outside that is secured by the inside, or even going to the city's tab and creating a request via tab. That way, it notifies the community center employees of the request. And finally, it's my recommendation that the employees of the community center go to an hourly pay of $12 to $15 an hour. Events after normal business hours, the community center and the board, with whomever, can set a pay for that pay to be paid towards that person working that amount. With these adjustments, this will save our community center about $25,440 alone in payroll. And again, I haven't even seen the expenses for the community center. And I have a budget analysis that was given to me, and in this budget analysis, culture and recreation should be cut by $19,000 in order to try and fix this budget. Again, I'm not saying in any way to close down the community center. All I'm saying is, let's work together to make those things better.
We need you to come too, but I would like to say this. Since the last meeting, the, the theory that we ran, that I requested, that we shut the chillers down, and the light bill from the community center went from $4,000 to $1,200.
But may or distance reflect the light bill?
But what I'm saying is...
So if we add, that's gonna make that number go up, we're operating in the red.
So what happens is, so Monica and I, those of us, Miranda, we all, those that come in here, we said, we talked about it. And that alone, I'm just putting it out there, that, that alone, to go from $4,000 a month to $1,200, that is gonna save, how much, Monica? We're gonna save about $27,000? I'm just, okay, so I just gave that part of that.
But that's not even included in these?
But I just want to give my update.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the expenses, you haven't gotten, uh, clear, so how you go about? I don't think it's fair that we not sit together as a board, employees and all, to see what expenses are the community center, uh, given. I mean, all the line items? No, I mean, is everything that's on the line for the community center is for the community center? I just can't believe that.
Clerk Mabel?
We went through it once before, but we can go back through it again by line item and go over again.
Yeah, because it sounds a lot...
When I asked for these expenses from Clerk Mabel, she had none of this information. I was told to get in touch with Sylvia Fields. I sent an email July 31st at around 3:30, January 31st, around between 3:30 and 5:00 PM.
But they're, they're not paying the bills, the city is paying the bills, right? So you, you all should have the expenses.
I'm just trying to get clarity to their expenses.
I think it needs to be in person, I agree. I think emails get mixed up, some people don't see them. Personal contact, actually setting, put physically in a place to request something is imperative.
But you have a system of checking.
And I don't think it's fair of him to make all those changes, and he really don't have all the answers.
And at least make that attempt, if that doesn't work, then at least he can honestly say, I went there physically and asked them, and they had no answer from me. Messages and stuff like that gets, gets mixed up. I'm just saying, personal conversations is imperative.
So, 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 so Councilwoman Perry, if I send you an email, you are saying that the email will get messed up?
It could.
How? And it's a city?
If I'm busy maybe here doing something, because I come in here at least once a week, if not more, and I have another job to do, sometimes emails just get lost. Sometimes you don't have time to read everything, or you're misconstrued.
And I don't like...
All I'm saying is, personal contact in person, not asking other people to get stuff for you, do it.
This, this came from the accounting department. Salaries, plus what was turned in from the community center.
At the last meeting, she asked you, did you come ask me in person? That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying you're wrong.
She asked me, did I ask at the community center last month?
Right.
It got to the community.
But have you ever gone there?
It's not been responded.
Just say, hey, I sent an email, I didn't get the...
I just sent it!
Hey.
In person over there.
Okay, so. So at this time, once again, Mr. Bowden has made his, um, his presentation. We've heard from the board president.
And we would like to sit with you.
No problem.
And, uh, the other, uh, who's keeping the numbers and all, and, and come up with something solid that's going to really benefit the, the community center. Those hours, you have, have you talked to them about those hours to see how well that will work for them?
I think the payroll, what they're making, and what has been turned into the city, that's solid. That's solid.
Yeah, but there's a lot of other things that's...
I, I don't have options of those. All I have is what we pay and pay.
And I don't think it's fair of you to make those, uh, uh, recommendations if you haven't gotten the whole picture.
I requested it. To, from you?
You didn't request anything from me. Get it started with your request from me.
Hold on one moment.
Oh, no, you hold on, you give me what you sent to me. Send it to me in writing, in detail what you want. You give it to me, I don't know what email you have, but you gotta get a new one.
Well, I was provided your email.
I don't know what you was providing.
By the city clerk.
But that's too bad. That's too bad.
If Mr. Councilman Dewey will read this email for me, please.
If this council will read anything?
No, it's, it's, I don't, I'm not showing it to you. If Councilman Dewey will read this email.
Why wouldn't a visit to them would have worked?
She, she just asked for it to be read, I'm at, what does it say? Read it.
I don't give a fuck, what email, you send it to me, you gotta email.
We're gonna get ordered here, we're gonna get ordered here. We're gonna get ordered. We're gonna get ordered, we're gonna get it right now, okay? So at this point, we have heard from Councilman Bowden. We've heard from the, uh, board president. He wants to make a motion. Is that your motion, Councilman?
Those are my motions.
Just, do he have a second?
I think we need to put a team together.
Does he, the question is, can we get a second? The question is, can I get a second? You can't go into a table until you get a second. So you have a motion, so now, do I have a second?
What's the, what's the, what's the motion?
The motion is that the Patterson Community Center goes three hours, three days a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. To 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. See, now you're gonna ask me to be respectful, because she can't be disrespectful.
Okay, let's get the motion so we can move forward.
The motion is that the Patterson Center, Community Center, be open three days a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, from the hours of 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, or 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with only one employee working those hours. We don't need two people in there if they're not doing anything. Employees can work alternate days, working from four hour, working those four hours. Secondly, reference to bookings. Now, if you wanna take a motion by motion, I'm fine.
Motion by motion, okay?
That's my first motion.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second? The question is a second. Motion failed.
The second motion is, since the city hall says they cannot handle bookings of the community center, and there will be times when people will make requests other than operation of the community center, it is my recommendation in the form of a motion that the board and its employees get together to create a successful way that people can request their rentals.
So a motion on the floor, can we get a second?
So it's a motion to have, help them to, I'll second that.
So you have a motion on the floor to get together, to get together physically, face to face? Councilman Bowden, the board?
No, 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 not Councilman Bowden. The board and their employees need to get a system away to be able to do that.
So you...
I'll recant that.
Okay, so motion on the floor, can I get a second?
This motion is being made that for...
The community center board and their employees to get a way to successfully receive bookings. But you can't do it because of that. When you broke the motions up, it all, it falls apart.
I think none of it.
I think we're, we're overlooking at, at the whole part of the picture. I'm not here in any way to close the community center down. But when we have meetings, we have meetings, and, okay, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna talk about it.
We got a motion on the floor.
And then at the end of the time, nothing ever gets done. This budget cannot get in line until we start taking action to what...
Councilman Bowden, I do respect you, but you sent out your stuff on Fridays, right before meeting. You do not discuss anything with us for 28 or 29 days. That's not fair to this council. This council didn't even know what you're presenting tonight. Uh, Councilman, we don't hear from you until the Friday before we have a meeting. That is not fair to no one. So we have a motion on the floor.
But when we look at the budget for the community center, the budget for the community center is operating in the red.
So we have a motion on the floor. I have to move forward to get out of here, get out of that. The motion on the floor by Councilman Bowden is that the board get together with city hall and come up with a...
The board get together with their employees of the community center on a successful way to operate. But the first motion was killed, so we can go on ahead and move on, because...
So you rescind the motion?
I rescind it.
Okay, and do you have another one?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, so.
You're clapping, but the community's...
Councilman Bowden.
Well, I'll tell you like this, as far as the community center goes, as far as the council's concerned, some of the council myself included, I don't want to see the community center shut down. There are some things that need to be fixed.
I agree.
I'm willing to get together with you all and come up with a way to get these fixed. Because we do have to present community center in our next budget, which we gonna start working on next month. So if we can get together, you know, I'm willing to do it.
I think that's the main component. They, you could sit and, and you can discuss and try and figure stuff out, but if you don't have the guidance or the answer to... but if you don't have the guidance or the answer that you want to present, because you don't know what to expect it to present, it needs to be in-person conversation is the point I was trying to make.
So, so Councilwoman Perry, tell me, if I go to your residence, you can't tell me what goes on at your house?
That's not what I said, Councilman.
Alright, we're gonna move on to item number three. Discussion on Employee Pay Presented by Councilman De Mail Bowden. Thank you, um, Ms. Keith, Ms. Turner.
Again, after reviewing the minutes from a city council meeting dated August 2nd, 2021, and I repeat the minutes verbatim. Former city accountant at the time, City Count Reginald Weary, explained the breakdown prepared for the American Recovery Fund plan. Weary said, "We have $2.1 billion awarded to us. If we divide that equally over a seven components, we can spend $305,714.29 in each sector, or $87,346 each year over the next three and a half years." In addition to the American Recovery Fund, there are additional funds available to help with pandemic-related costs. With this in mind, we can spend less, we can spend less of the American Recovery Funds in some sectors and allocate more of other sectors. Mayor Grogen stated that instead of receiving the one-time stipend of $2,000 like the same Mary Parish School Board, the city employees would receive an increase of 6% over the next three years, with 3% coming from the general fund and 3% coming from the American Recovery Fund. Therefore, a raise would depend upon the availability of funds. I'll speed forward through the minutes and say a motion was made by Councilman Condo and seconded by Councilmember Renthro to accept the American Recovery Fund plan. A roll call was held. Councilmembers Condo, Darnell, Renthro, and Johnson voted yes. Councilmember Russo was absent. And to note, on this motion, Councilwoman Johnson was just appointed the same night of the meeting and probably never had the opportunity to review the city's financials at the time of the vote. To me, a 6% raise is a sizable increase in hourly pay for one year. And then to have three years of a 6% incre- increase, I feel that it has been a big burden on the city's general and the American Recovery Fund, with 3% coming from the city and 3% coming from the American Fund, Recovery Fund. In today's time, especially with situations at hand, most people on a normal job only get 1% to 2% in a raise. But 6% over the next three years? That's unheard of to me. As of yesterday, when I checked, the American Recovery Fund only has $100 in it. So, since I have two individuals here tonight, I'd like to ask Mayor Grogen and Mayor Pro- Mayor Protem Condo, how are we going to replenish the American Recovery Fund once all the monies have been gone?
It wasn't sent there to replenish.
So how are you gonna designate the 3% for this raise was gonna come from it?
That was, that, where you see, that's what y'all miss. That, that. My turn to talk now.
Okay.
2022, 2021, 2022, 2023, they have received those. There's nothing else to receive. And the key word to that was if the funds are available. Now, the way it was structured, the 3% from the general fund and 3% from, there's no more distribution. I don't know who's telling. There's a little coalition now. A little posse. That's running around saying, y'all haven't gotten it. We went back and they have gotten it.
Okay.
There's nothing else to give.
But you're, but you, you have to understand.
You asked me the question, but I didn't, I gave you.
Okay, so you say there's nothing to give, but the city is now taking, instead of 3% from general, they're taking 3% from the American Recovery to compensate that 6%. Our budget is now bearing an expense of 3% off of an old budget. Yes?
Okay, so let me, uh, one thing I want to explain, that wasn't Councilman John Renthro, that was his wife Dawn Renthro. I do need to clarify that, uh, because when you just say, for the record, you just say Renthro, that was Dawn, because we had lost Councilman Renthro, okay? So, as I stated, the three and the three, and that key word at the end, what was the file? What would, what you just read off, what it says, as long as funds were available, correct?
So, have you made the cutback?
No.
It's gonna have to be a cutback, because it continues. After the three and a half years, it continues. The raise, he gave the increase.
We did a 5% cut.
I, I just, I, I just talked about that. I'm not finished yet. How are you going to accommodate? So you have a general fund where you're pulling 3% from, and you have a, a, American Recovery Fund where you're pulling 3% from. That's the total to accommodate the 6%, correct?
There's no 6% going out.
Yes, but you, the employees are still getting the 6% raises. No, you're, you're, hold on. You're still receiving the bud, you're still receiving the, your pay based off of a 6%. Am I correctly saying to you? Yes, they are. They are. Yes, they are. They really are. And, and our general fund budget has now not only taken 3%, but it's taking 6% out of it.
Let me just say this. I am not, and I can't, I'm not a CPA. I think what he is trying to say, if you received three 6% raises, one year, the next year, the next year, your pay scale might be $18 now.
18%.
And you're still paying $18, except when we made the 5% cut. Y'all made the 5% cut last time. I believe that's what he's trying to say.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you for saying it. Now, because you are still receiving the eight, some people have received over a total of three years. Let's put it like this. Over a total of three years, all employees who have received three years of increases, you have received a 18% raise. Those employees that have received. That, that, let me get there. Let me get. Hold on, I'm not done. If you let me finish, I'll get there. So therefore, if you work, if you have received two years of, of the 6% increase, you have got 12%. And if you have, if you have received one 6%, you got the six.
No, I didn't.
And I'm not talking about you if you didn't get it.
Okay.
So therefore, if I can finish my conversation.
Yes, sir.
I will. So therefore, it is my recommendation that employees who have received all three raises for three years totaling 18% be cut back by 7%. So therefore, if you only receive, y'all not understanding the math, but I work with it. If you receive two years of raises at 6%, you receive 12. You be cut by an additional three. If you receive one six, one 6%, you will gain 1% back. And if you are not afforded a raise by this American Recovery Fund, you get your 5% back. And what I base that upon is all employees, you got 2% increments, 2021 or whenever it started, 2022, and 2020, 2023.
Can I say, I got a 3% raise. That was it. 3%. I didn't get a 3, 3. I got a 3. Did you come far?
I'm not basing mine on that. I'm basing mine. Mine is only for the employees.
Somebody got a six. They get a 1% pay raise. What about me?
No, no, no. Mine is based on the employees who were in according to this American Recovery Fund. If you weren't in on this American Recovery Fund, you need to go back to where you are, all I believe. If you are a new employee, you should go back to where you are.
So here we go. Once again, this is new to all of us. Alright, so he hasn't, he has.
This is, this is not new.
What you're presenting is new.
Councilwoman Weinbach and I came to you last year in May about this. And you said, oh, we gonna move forward. We gonna cut five now. We gonna cut five after Christmas, and we're gonna do those things that need to be done.
And every time we spoke about it, did anybody make the motion?
I'm making it now.
See, that, see, that's what I need is like, I, I will vote, and if y'all have a coming to meeting, Miss Bell is sitting there, and council. If the cuts would have been made when I said it, it would have been easier with the smaller cuts. Now it's a larger cut. And you can back me on that. You know I did, um, discuss that, but nobody wanted to put on the floor.
Well, I put it on the floor today.
So let's go back to what your recommendation is, and if we get a second.
It will, it would be tiered, only based upon those employees who receive money referenced to the American Recovery Fund, that six, that 18, 6, or 12% raise. There are some employees that haven't even gotten any money. Those people need to go back to where they were, because they weren't even affected by this.
So what is your recommendation there? Your percentage? So we, we could get that correctly in the book?
All employees who receive a total of 18% over three years, reference to the American Recovery Fund, be cut an additional 7%. And if you look at it, I have allotted 2, 4, 6. If you add that, that totals to 18. All employees who only got two years, equalling to 12% for the two-year period, get cut another 3%. All employees who only receive one 6% increase, they get one, they get their 1% back. And all employees who did not receive anything as a result of this motion, because there's no money in the American Recovery Fund, they get their 5% back.
So we got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
So, the, the money that you're talking about, in addition to the five that we've already taken?
Yes, but it's based upon the raises that you received. It's only fair. We have penalized people who were not even a part of the city at that time, and that's not fair. But, 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 but to understand and explain, let me tell you. If we would have just gave the, if the council, I would have never approved that. But if we would have just gave every employee $2,000, we still would have had $2 million left. But we don't have that, because they were pulling money. So now, these salaries are draining our general fund.
So we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Motion dies. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Now, the insurance, uh.
Ask the question.
I gotta get a motion to bring this, what has been tabled out of. I gotta, I gotta get, they tabled the insurance. In order for the insurance to come back out, I have to get a motion and a second. In order for it to come out, it will not be able to go back in once that person. Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, untable the insurance.
You put it on it. You the one that made the motion to table it?
I, I, yeah, we all tabled it.
So who made the motion? So the person who made the motion has to bring it back out, and it's Councilwoman Perry.
Oh, we look like clowns.
No, because things are not being done right. That's why. No one looks like clowns. The facts are the facts.
So now we go into new, to new business, city vehicle law, Councilman Bowden. Mr. Steve, please get to this before you.
In almost all agencies of the state where vehicles are used by an agency, employees have a law. Some type of monthly log or record-keeping system is kept in every vehicle. This allows department heads and financial people of the agency the opportunity to see the number of miles for the month of the year, gallons of gas for the month of the year, and even the cost associated with maintenance. When the budget preparation time comes, it gives those preparing the budget true figures when it comes to the vehicles for, um, that agency. I have prepared a sample log, and I would like to recommend that it be viewed by council and all others who wish to view, and then maybe on the next meeting in March, we adopt it.
And I agree with you on one point. Let me tell you. Mr. Steve runs a report every month, and it goes through fuel mileage by, and fueling support by all the workers.
Mr. Bowden, every vehicle we own has a designated number, ID number. And a GPS system set up where I can tell you exactly which vehicle, which employee fills that vehicle up, how many miles per gallon it gets, total mileages, mileage, and the cost of, the estimated cost of fuel for each department, each vehicle. I can give you that information.
Is it for all city vehicles?
Yes, sir. All city vehicles.
Okay.
Now, I, I understand what you're saying, cuz I drove a vehicle for Bell South, and I had to fill out a report every day. Okay, uh, but with the city of Patterson, you got vehicles being driven by multiple employees.
But that log can say in that same vehicle.
Well, I mean, what's the?
That, that, that log is based upon that vehicle.
I, I still see all the mileage every month of every vehicle, no matter what.
Well, well, we noticed the few, there was something with the gas or whatnot, and there was, it was kinda high or whatnot. So I, I'm just trying to make recommendations.
If you would get with me, I would be very happy to show you exactly what we got.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, now, item number two, under new business, resolution of respect for Mr. James Duchamp. Mr. James, James Duchamp was the brother-in-law of Chief Grogen and the uncle of the rec. board member, C.L. Grogen. James C. Nelson Duchamp, March 2nd, 1947 to January 21st, 2025. Whereas James C. Nelson Duchamp was born on March 2nd, 199, um, 1947 to late Josephine Alice Griffin Duchamp. It goes on to talk about his schooling and so forth, and he was employed with Halliburton, and he retired after 29 years. His funeral was on last Saturday. It says, whereas Mr. James C. Nelson Duchamp was laid to rest in New Salem Baptist Church Cemetery in Pasadena. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the American Council of City Councilmen do at this time, at this moment, express their deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of Mr. James C. Nelson Duchamp. If this resolution is approved, uh, a copy will be given to the family, and it will be placed in the minutes. Motion made by Councilwoman Perry. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weinbach. All in favor? Any opposed? Uh, resolution of respect for Mr. Clarence Griffin, um, Clarence Griffin, better known as Tucci. Tucci was the uncle to our jailer, Miss Tisa Griffin Pickett. November 3rd, 1960, January 13th, 2025. He was 64 years old and a native resident of Patterson. And he, um, transitioned people on Monday, January 13th, 2025. He was laid, he too was laid to rest in New Salem Baptist Church Cemetery. Now, therefore, it be resolved, if we can get a motion and a second in approval, it will go into the minutes. Motion made by Councilwoman Perry. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Dewey. All in favor? Alright, any opposed? And we have one for Mr. Ed Crosby Jr., uh, February 9th, 1938, January 8th, 2025. Whereas Ed Crosby Jr., age 86, a pastor, he's down in Pasadena on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. Mr. Ed was the, um, stepfather, and I don't believe in the word stepfather, but he was the stepfather of Councilman Dewey and our, um, police department worker, um, Miss Lisa Dewey Shambly, and our city worker, Mr. Father-in-law to, um, Mr. Robert Shambly. He was born in Grand Cayman, Louisiana, and love the fact that, um, he lived here for, um, the remainder of his years. And, um, he was faithful over at, um, Mount Zion. John Chapel, AM, yeah. And, um, he was laid to rest at Irish Cemetery. If I can get a motion, um, we'll place it in the records and a copy given to the family. Motion made by Councilwoman Perry.
Second.
Second by, um, Mayor Con- uh, Protem Condo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like Sharon to come forward. Announcement.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sharon Gillan. I am the water plant supervisor. I'm in charge of your water supply, along with three other operators. We work diligently to make your water safe and keep it safe. Occasionally, things happen out of our control. We had an exceedance on THMs, it's total trihalamine things. It's a disinfectant byproduct when using chlorine dioxide. Our chlorine dioxide generator went out. It's hard to get parts in. We had to wait a while before we got the parts in. To get the part in, we have a specialized group of people that comes in to work on the instrument. We ourselves are not qualified to work on it, so we're at the mercy of the people coming in to work on it. They came in and fixed it. In the meantime, it was down. We did not use chlorine dioxide. And samples was taken by the state and they came back high. Samples are taken quarterly, every three months. Towards the end of last year, we had an exceedance. The limit is eighty, we actually had eighty-one. Sample was taken again this month. We don't know the results yet, but the average on that should bring it down. The machine is working fine. We have no problems with it now. Everything should go back to normal. This happens on the end of a dead-end street where the violation occurred. That system is not looped, which we have to have the water moving. Therefore, we have a sample tap. The state collects samples quarterly with that tap. We sample daily at that tap for different parameters. In order to avoid this happening again, we have to loop the system, which means putting a pipe in to connect to the other street so the water steady moves. If not for that, we have to put in a hydrant beyond the tap to blow off that excess stagnant water. If not that, we have to put a blow-off line at the end, somehow to move that water out that's kinda stale or stagnant. We don't have enough people in the water plant department to go out and flush daily, or to flush the whole system. There's only four of us. Distribution has a lot of guys, but they're busy doing water, sewer, and gas. You have to know what you're doing when you're opening hydrants. You open it too fast, you can blow a line. We all experienced that during the storm, during the ice snowstorm, where everybody's water lines broke, pressure dropped. We doing everything we can to keep that from happening again, but you can rest assured, your water is safe. If you don't believe me, you can ask the state, you can see the records. It's there, we have nothing to hide. This is the first time we had an exceedance on THM. It may not be the last, but you will know about it. If it was an emergency, you would have known about it twenty-four hours after it happened. This is not an emergency. Your water is safe to drink. If you wanna see what we do, make an appointment, come by the water plant. We'll show you what we do. We don't hide nothing. What the test is, is what it is. If it fails, the state gonna say, hey, you failed. We are here working all hours of the day and night to make sure your water is safe. When you're asleep, you're not worried about your water, but we are. We worry about more than anybody else ever knows. And trust me, when something ain't right, we gonna make it right. We gonna find out what the problem is. If we have to call in a technician to come in, we'll wait till they get there. We want it fixed. We notified the state, hey, our instrument is down. That's okay. We notified the state. They know it's down. So when it gets back up, hey, it's back up. We're ready, we're running, we good. They come out and check twice a month. They come and I collect samples. We got taps running all over the city. On Chem Street, there's a hydrant that has a hose on it. It's running to help us flush that line. People complain about, oh, you're running excess water. That's for your safety. If I can't get that stagnant water out, guess what? You gonna be drinking some stagnant water. It will smell good, it don't taste good. If you ever looked under the microscope at it, it will freak you out. I know that for a fact. That's why we do what we do. If you have a problem with something, come see me. My number, nine eight five, nine nine two, eight one zero five, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
Agreed.
If I don't call you back, give me a couple minutes. I may be asleep. I may have to come out the shower, but I will call you back.
I do wanna, I do wanna thank Sharon. Um, I, I wanna, I, I really wanna thank Sharon, but not only Sharon. I wanna thank Virgil, and Andrew, and all in the water department, Lionel, Neil. That plant ran for twenty-four hours. The letter that went out, it couldn't went out better. We only distributed what the state gave to us, but it should have went on our letter here. This was the first time having to send a letter out like that. So it's always the first time, so we know next time not to send it out like that. When the water pressure dropped, that had never happened here before. And trust me, I can honestly tell you there were no breaks in the city lines. It was one hundred and ten plus homes, churches, and businesses. Even a week later, we were still shutting off. That's what caused the water pressure to drop. I don't know why people think that Rodney Rogan and councilpeople actually have water and accessibility when they don't, and we choose those times, that time of night to do those things. But I wanna commend all, all those workers and this council served as one, it wasn't a I, on that night. All five were out. And we were looking, and we were looking, and we were looking. So to the people on Facebook, Eugene and I have taken a whipping. We didn't take what Eugene got. Soon as they finished one with their infrastructure, they had to go to another one. People sent down Facebook when they see guys down in ice water.
Own the news today.
Real selfish. And y'all need to stop it. That Facebook stuff gotta stop. Duvall was down Thursday night while we were at a banquet for two to three hours. You didn't hear a peep. And I know the Facebook warriors on. And I, because of God in me, I'll laugh and smile with you, because you're not gonna stop me from getting to heaven. Here for a little, bashing your own town. Like it's fun for us to be running around out there, looking in a cold while you cold, you real toasty. And we're running around out there, we were out there. When Sharon called me, I was walking around Patterson, walking around, listening for leaks. And I was calling Virgil, I was calling Andrew, I was calling Mr. Terry. Terry, thank you so very much. And I mean, they were all, we were, I needed to shut off, I needed to shut off. We, we, we did it as a team. And then Sharon called, she said, Mayor, I've lost pressure. But I can tell you one thing about it. I didn't worry about it, 'cause that's all of the God. But I did call all the fellow mayors. I called the parish president. Where do we go from here? And they walked us through this. I'd never been through that before. So while you were snickering, grinning, and making all the nasty comments, the water came back better than, um, before. All the information, the samples that were sent in, nothing. You are blessed people that take so much for granted. But you need to go back and look at Facebook and look at the pictures of men down in ice in Franklin. Not once, not twice. Pipes will break it everywhere. City of Patterson workers, thank you so very much. Thank you, sir. Engineer, thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much.
I guess I will add to that, just real quick. I know that's always a tough time. We're not used to the cold weather. And most of our houses are raised, right? Three feet are usual, you know, or at least a pier and beam type of thing. You know, these are the times, especially during the spring, you don't think about it. But that's really the time when you wanna go and wrap those pipes so that when the winter comes, you ain't hustling and bustling and try to do everything, alright? So that's a really tough thing to do, to keep up with the water production, when everybody's trickling water so that lines aren't freezing and breaking. That's just, we're not made for that, because our pipes are above the ground. So I just wanna make sure, just add to that. It's a tough job to do, so. And I get a little fired up, because I'm an operator too, so I know how much work it goes into keeping things moving and moving. But anyways, uh, in respect to the sewer lift station project that we got, we're on the fourth lift station where at Signee and Tall Timbers, we started that on the twenty-seventh of January. We also started some point repairs for some lines that need to be repaired underneath. And we started that on the sixteenth of January.
See, I got a question I'm compelled to ask you. The president hauled all federal grants. All one point five million on that sewer lift station is caught up in that. Now, the state money we still have.
Yes, sir.
But the one point five million, uh, what do you know, where, where does it, where do we, everybody stand to that right now?
So so far, so I have a couple other projects right now that have federal funds, and we're still working as necessary. If you read the, the rescinding of what they did with the freeze, they said that they're still actively looking at ways to cut back on funds, right? But they are also implementing those things. So unless you hear something, I'm not going off of Fox or CNN. Until you hear something, we have not been told to pull off, and I have other state projects that they even said from the state, continue as go.
Yeah, 'cause I was paying money still, two point three million, um, in Rowan.
Yes.
But if, you know, we're just worried about that one point five.
It was a, uh, it was a, a shock to, I think, to everybody. It got everybody's attention, for sure. And so I'm glad that, right now, we are good, so, but we also need to make sure that we are also turning in those, uh, uh, pay apps timely, so that we make sure that we don't get halted if we do need to tell the contractor, you come back later or something like that. So I don't wanna get caught up in anything. Okay? Any other questions? Sorry, I do get a little jazzed up as an operator.
I'll end with this, and, um, because we're, that capitol, we gotta get that. If we had electronic meters, water meters, we would've been, we would've been able to shut off from here. We would have been able to shut off from here at City Hall, okay? Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna ask you all to keep Mr. Russell in prayer, and, uh, keep Mr. Russell in prayer. And I want to make an announcement. Kim Garrisco, our utility clerk, building clerk, was with the city for twenty-three years. She retired. She's gonna start enjoying life. And so Kelly, would you please stand? Kelly would be the person that you would be dealing with now. If we get there next month, because all of those broken lines, now we have all that water, and fairly people that let their water run for a whole week. The state law really does not allow us to trim nothing, nothing of, of the blue. But because it was a line outside of the home, and it didn't go down the sewer, because if it go down the commode and support, it has to be treated sewer-wise. But broken lines that are outside, it gives you leeway. So Chief, I can tell you now, you probably need officers, um, beginning next month, and that February bill, um, January bill, um, really comes out, because right now, the one that just went out was what, December? Not gonna be here now. But Kelly would be a person, Kelly would be a person that you gotta get in contact with. Well, I read our address, but I want to come to that one. But, um, Kelly would be the person that will be dealing with Billy, okay? And, um, I just wanna thank you all too, because, once again, I, because of the weed law, some people don't recognize me when I'm standing there, and I listen to the conversation, and thank you all for keeping your cool. But I told you straight up, if they abusive, buzz, make a buzz, get the chief over here, that's disturbing peace. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to?
Mayor, I'd just like to officially, at this close of this meeting, remove myself from the finance committee.
Hi, my name is Robert McGraw, and, uh, I'm not gonna take too much of your time. For my sister's, uh, eighth grade graduation, uh, I spoke to Mr. Virgil about getting a job. And I just wanna say, Mayor Rogan, Mr. Steve, Mr. T, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to get a job, uh, get paid every week to take care of my two-month-old daughter, who, uh, when I found out my woman was pregnant, I was scared. I had a job, I was stressing. And I just wanna say thank y'all for the opportunity to better myself and make it so much easier for me to provide for my two-month-old daughter and my beautiful fiance. And I just wanna say thank y'all so very much for the opportunity that y'all are giving me. And Mayor Rogan, Mr. Steve, Mr. Virgil, Mr. T, if y'all ever need me at any point, whether I'm doing something or not, y'all give me a call, and I will make sure I will be there to give y'all any help y'all need. That, uh, I can show y'all the appreciation that I have for each and every single one of y'all. And I just wanna say thank y'all so very much.
You're welcome. Motion for John? Motion made by Councilwoman Perry, can I get a second?
Sir.
Come, uh, by Mayor Proton, um, condo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.